It's been to order at six o'clock. Councilmember Lee rejected the lead in the pledge allegiance.
Of course. I pledge allegiance to the flag.
And can we get roll call, please?
Councilmember Horneck.
Here.
Councilmember Mead.
Here.
Councilmember Sanchez.
Here.
Vice Mayor Lewis.
Here.
And Mayor Sova.
Here. Any reordering of the agenda tonight?
Mr. Mayor, we don't have any reordering this evening. However, I would note for the benefit of the public. Just so we don't have anyone waiting around. Our public hearing item, item number eight on the agenda pertaining to transient occupancy tax registration and short term rental use only for hotels. The intent this evening is to continue that to a date certain. It would be our next council meeting, which I believe is November thirteenth. And we will continue it to that date at the time when it's called on the agenda.
So just to confirm for the record, so the item number eight will be continued at the next meeting, which is November, Thursday, November fifteenth.
We will deal with the formal continuance at the time that the item is called. But yes, that's the, that's the intent, just so no one's waiting around if, you know, for that item, it won't be heard.
I have a question before we get started. Is it possible, do we, is there staff on Zoom? Can we see them as opposed to our lovely faces?
It is on gallery. I'm trying. There we go.
Okay.
Chanel's there.
Chanel, I hope your camera ready.
Yeah, unfortunately, my camera's not set up.
Oh, and Rose. All right, Rose is there as well. Yes.
Okay, oh, I don't see Rose.
She's not working.
All right, perfect. We'll continue along. We will now move to public comment for any items not on the agenda. And at this point, we have one public comment from a Miss Nancy Dorwin.
Thank you for this opportunity. My name is Nancy Dorwin. I live at one oh four Six Flags Circle in Buellton in the Rancho de Maria subdivision. I come before you tonight to bring to your attention that during the installation of the Frontier Communications Fiber Optics system in our neighborhood, they tore up the sidewalks in front of our house. And part of the sidewalks was our two front corner property surveyor markers that were set when our subdivision was created back in nineteen eighty five. And they came back and repaved the sidewalks. And there was no further installation or survey of our corner markers of our property. So we talked with the city inspector Octavio Ferrara when he was out in our neighborhood. And this occurred August eleventh through August fifteenth. And we told him that he needed to get the tags re-set by a licensed land surveyor. So we've been in communication with the city. We wrote to Mr. Wolf. And we gave him some additional information. We gave him a copy of the recorded tract map for Rancho de Maria. We also gave a recorded correction that the licensed land surveyors Penfield and Smith recorded subsequent to our subdivision map indicating that those markers were set in the sidewalk if that's where they landed. So they did land there and we had two, two corners of our property, our front property corners both marked. So we've been attempting to get the markers reset with, in accordance with the statutes required. And if you'll notice that these land surveyor markers were supposed to be noted and sent to the county surveyor prior to the construction work being done. And none of that was done. So we want to make sure that what follows is according to the state requirements and the county surveyor's requirements, and those are recorded again with the county. So we've been at this since essentially August nineteenth, we sent our initial letter to the, to the city. And we don't want this to be forgotten. And if there was an encroachment permit, we've requested a copy of that. And why there wasn't a inspection of all the land surveyor marks in the sidewalks denoting property line corners, why that wasn't done by the contractor or under the city's permit? So that, you know, this, this follow-up and this replacement would be done in a timely manner and it would be done properly. So I know for my purposes, my lot, two markers are gone. I have no idea how many more in our subdivision are gone. And I think that bears an investigation, inspection to thoroughly address this issue. When you get a land surveyor to replace the markers. So we're hoping that we can move forward on this in a timely way. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Moving along, we'll move to no further public comment. We'll move to our consent calendar. And tonight we have minutes of September twenty fifth, twenty twenty five, regular city council meeting, list of claims to be approved and ratified for payment to date for fiscal year twenty five, twenty six. Monthly treasurers report, September thirtieth, twenty twenty five, authorization of expenditure of funds for one thousand tree initiative Oak Valley Elementary School Project. Approval of amended contract with Solid Waste Solutions, Inc. For solid waste compliance. Acceptance and filing of stormwater management program SWMP annual report FY twenty four, twenty five and resolution number twenty five, twenty eight. A resolution of the city council of the city of Buellton, California regarding parking restrictions at the driveway of PGE service station located at fifty five. For the consent calendar, before we get to that, is any items need to be polled or do we do public comment first? Public comment first?
Poll first, in case the comments on the polled items.
Any items to be polled before we move to public comment? Okay, we'll bring up next consent item for Stormwater from Mr. John Dorwin for item number six.
John Dorwin, one oh four Six Flags Circle, Buellton, California, resident since nineteen eighty eight. The city has a stormwater disconnect problem. The city has an incomplete drainage system, which was inherited from the Community Service District upon incorporation in nineteen ninety two. Their stormwater plan for Zaca Creek does not include any facilities, any maintenance easements, or any plans or programs to get water from that portion of Zaca Creek on lot seventy seven, which is the homeowner's common area parcel across the two hundred yards on the hub parcel to send the water into the San Ynez River. And we have documented flooding and sedimentation and erosion problems where because there's no maintenance easements or agreements and the county is not maintaining that section of Zaca Creek. It has flooded and Zaca Creek has been diverted into the Rancho de Maria Homeowners Association Common Area Lot Seventy Seven, causing damage, which is documented in the city's files and we brought to the council's attention when it occurred. This is a major uncorrected problem with the city's drainage plan. And that implicates the report that's attached to the staff report that wants to file the staff report with the regional water quality control board. That creates a statutory problem because the city is aware of the defect in the storm water management plan and that Zaca Creek is not under any control once it enters the hub parcel. And in relation to the approved subdivision map for that parcel, we have filed a second amended complaint for declaratory relief, a writ of administrative mandate and breach of fiduciary duty with the superior court. And that issue is now before the court as to the adequacy of the conditions and the drainage plan. And whether or not the failure by the city, the developer and the homeowners association in the subdivision conditions constitutes a public nuisance. We believe it does. We think you need a plan. If you're going to have a major drainage feature that bisects the community of Buellton in a creek that runs from twenty mi, for twenty miles from Zaca Lake all the way to the San Ynez River, we think you need control. We think if you don't have control and you haven't put conditions on the subdivision, you are in violation of the State Subdivision Map Act. You're not providing for drainage, you're not providing for flood control, and you're not protecting the public from waters escaping from Zaca Creek and going on to adjacent parcels and causing sedimentation. The mess that was created by the flooding of Zaca Creek has not, has not been corrected. There is still storm debris and sedimentation on the association's property. It's never been cleaned up. Some of it was just pushed over there from the owner's side of the hub project to the area between the fence and his property. So we believe that this problem is just going to get worse the longer you avoid the recognition that Zaca Creek needs to have stormwater facilities. It needs to have maintenance easements and it needs a program to make sure that it doesn't become blocked again and cause damage to the community. In the meantime, we think you ought to redo the staff report that's attached to the staff report, and you better correct that staff report before you attempt to file it with the Regional Water Quality Control Board. You have our letter, which we sent to you. And in that letter, we address the issue of what the city's liability will be if the report is sent for filing with the Regional Water Quality Control Board, a public office of the state of California without noting that the stormwater system is defective and incomplete. Thank you.
Thank you very much. With consideration of this, what was just brought forth, would it be possible to have the item pulled so that staff could go deep dive into it and kind of respond to that?
I can give a very brief response. Zaca Creek is under the control of a county agency. It's been under the control of a county agency since the city's founding, which means that it is not part of the city's stormwater management plan and not part of the city's stormwater program. This report is to deal with the city's program, the city's facilities, and so Zaca Creek, the fact that it's not part of the city's facilities, which the gentleman alluded to, means that it doesn't need to be included in this report. The report can be filed as it's been every year. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Right. With that. This is not back and forth. I apologize, sir. With that in mind, would anyone like to make a motion for approval of the consent calendar or any other actions? Is there a second?
I'll second.
All right.
Hey, Vice Mayor Lewis.
Hi.
Councilmember Mead.
Hi.
Councilmember Horneck.
Hi.
Councilmember Sanchez.
Hi.
And Mayor Sova.
Hi. Moving along, we have no further presentations, so we'll move to the public hearing item, eight, number eight, ordinance number twenty five dash oh six. An ordinance of the city council of the city of Buellton, California, amending chapter three dot two eight dot oh six oh of the Buellton Municipal Code pertaining to registration requirements of hotel operators. I need to read the whole thing since we're. Okay, I can keep going. A hotel operator is subject to transient occupancy tax and adding chapter nineteen dash oh six dash or dot two nine oh of the Buellton Municipal Code pertaining to the operation of hotels for short term rental use only. Twenty five dash Z O A dash zero one introduction and first reading and our staff contacted city manager Scott Wolf.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At this time, I'm going to ask our city attorney to chime in with a discussion of the reason for continuance of the seat.
Should I state my recusal on the record first?
If you'd like to, yes, sir.
Okay. So before we get started, I wanted to address something in the letter that Mr. Moriarty's attorney sent to council last night on this agenda item. That letter references an email, which I use some unfortunate language in response to an email from our city manager about an entirely different property. Mr. Moriarty owns on Avenue Flags. That was the site of multiple code violations pursuant to letter accuses me of bias. With respect to the ordinance before us, it's not about Mr. Moriarty, nor has it ever been. It's about our defined economic corridor, and I can approach that with no bias or preconceived notions based on any aspect of the matter, including who owns the various motels affected. Having said that, I can understand that my choice of language on the unrelated code enforcement issue could be viewed as biased. So to keep things clean and avoid the appearance of tainting the process, I am going to recuse myself from this matter.
So normally I would ask Councilmember Horneck to step down, but under the Political Reform Act, we're going to treat this somewhat the way we treat the consent calendar, where if someone is recusing, they don't actually have to leave the dais. They're just going to not take action. So let me just kind of explain for the good of the public and for the record, why we're holding this over. As noted in the letter from Mr. Moriarty's attorney, that law firm reached out to the state's Department of Housing and Community Development, which is a long title, so we call them HCD. HCD did contact the city manager about the ordinance and last week, the city manager and planning director met with HCD representatives. Tonight's public hearing had already been noticed before that meeting, but it's very important to meet with them and get their input. At the end of the meeting, HCD asked for documentation that was then provided to them. We were all hopeful that they would respond before tonight and things could move forward, which is why there was a full staff report and packet for you. Unfortunately, HCD has not responded as of the time we had to make a decision this afternoon. So the recommendation, as, as the city manager said, has changed because it's best to get HCD's input prior to moving forward. While it's not controlling on the city, once HCD showed interest, their input, as I say, is very important to any process concerning housing. The request is that the staff report not be given and no public comments taken because that will allow all of the information that the public comments are based on, as well as all of the council's thoughts and for future discussion to be heard in the context of HCD's input. We can, city manager and I can answer any questions. If you have any otherwise, a motion to continue the matter open to your next meeting of November thirteenth would be proper at this time.
Right. Thank you very much. Is there a motion to do so?
I move to continue.
And I will second.
Okay, Vice Mayor Lewis.
Hi.
Mayor Sova.
Hi.
Councilmember Horneck.
Yeah, he's out.
Councilmember Mead.
Hi.
And Councilmember Sanchez.
Hi.
Wonderful. Thank you very much. Moving along, we'll go to council member comments and items. We'll start with Councilmember Sanchez.
No comment this time.
Okay, move on to Councilmember Horneck.
Yes, if I can, I just wanted to say thank you to council and for Miss Eva Powers, who is here with us tonight regarding the Thousand Trees Initiative. I spoke with Lisa Melby, principal of Oak Valley Elementary. So city council just voted to approve funding some more of the Thousand Trees Initiative pursuant to our budget item of the Thousand Trees Initiative. And if I can, I'm just going to read this email to you all from Lisa Melby. Oak Valley Elementary is excited to partner with the city of Buellton and the Thousand Trees Initiative. It looks like we'll be planting over thirty trees in the Oak Valley site. Shade seems to be in short supply on our campus, so I know our students are looking forward to cooler temperatures and a chance to relax with friends shaded by tree canopies. Just for everybody, we have November fifteenth selected for a big tree planting event, so please mark your calendars and consider coming. We are working with Eva Powers and Hudson Horneck, myself, to set up volunteers for this endeavor. If you're available, please come out and help plant with us. We'll also be inviting our families and community members to sponsor a tree on our campus. Those funds will be put back to the Thousand Trees Fund to continue this exciting work. Thank you. And that says it much better than I could have. I also want to thank the city and particularly Rose for Public Works and the restriping that's occurred on Avenue Flags. I think it, I think it's been effective. I think the restriping has been a good thing, particularly for safety pedestrians crossing from Ranch de Maria to RV flying flags. I was a little dismayed at some of the striping. Seems like a little sloppy there, but you know, it, I think it's serving its intended purpose. And I think that's it.
Wonderful. Councilmember Mead?
No comment.
Vice Mayor Lewis?
I just wanted to point out that I was driving today under the speed limit on the two forty six and I noticed on the right our motorcycle patrol officer and on the left a CHP. No, yeah, CHP highway patrol officer. So I would just like to shout out to them and say thank you for getting the extra patrol people out there.
Thank you. Just wanted to do two items. One is to thank you to everyone who attended the ad hoc committee for planning that took place and with Councilmember Horneck for getting discussion going for the the Hundred Hills site. I know we're, so we're workshopping the title still, but we're figuring it out as we go. So thank you, everyone who made it out for that. We will be having another meeting taking place. It'll be scheduled in late January, beginning of February. And one of the items that came out was for a survey to be sent out to the community, just to start to identify community values of what we'd like to see as a whole community to take place on that site. So keep an eye out for that. Another plug to send for Buellton Engage so that you can get. Another plug to send for Beulah to engage so that you can get that survey. And then thank you to those who have attended the the town hall meetings. We've had districts four, two and three. Some larger, some very intimate fireside chats we have. So thank you, Mayor Councilmember Sanchez and Councilmember Mead and Vice Mayor Lewis for that. And next week we'll be moving to District One, so appreciate that. And then finally, just because I was eating lunch today and it was supposed to be passed along, the community Thanksgiving dinner, which it might be in your staff. Is this in your?
It's not, but.
Okay, well, I'd like that holding up as anyone online can read it, but on November nineteenth from four to seven PM at the Honda the School Gym. It will be the community Thanksgiving dinner. The entire valley is invited to it. It is completely free. Brought to you by the San Diego Valley Presbyterian Church and Valley Christian Fellowship. I'll leave the information up here so that anyone in the audience, if you're looking for another Thanksgiving option, but um. I don't, just because there's so many papers, I'll just hand it to somebody. But yeah, so yeah, so please feel free to join us. Oh, there's a stack already. So please join us. A great way to meet your neighbors and enjoy the holidays. Moving along from that, do we have any written communications tonight?
None this evening.
Right, moving on to committee reports. We'll start again. Councilmember Sanchez, any?
Um, yes, I was a CCWA meeting today. And again, all the water's doing well. We had some interesting legal things going on to be worked on. And about three and a half hour meeting was fun. So I just wanted to let everybody know we have a lot of water. And it just, it just started raining, so we're doing good because we have rainfall already this season. And then the Chamber Commerce and Visitors Bureau, we had a meeting on Tuesday. And went over some things and getting ready for events, fall fest and winter fest and stuff, so. That was a good meeting as well. I think that was it.
Councilmember Mead?
No comment this time.
Councilmember Hornick?
I attended an elected leaders on homelessness forum. It was very informative. As one might expect, the lack of funding that is coming from the federal government puts strain on the state government and a lot of. Various resources for housing for. All aspects of of society have been have been strained and it's causing a lot of concern. I wish there was some way to end on a positive note, but you know, it it does come down to a funding issue and then and I think raising awareness, at least in the local level as to what. You know, that those issues are here are important and that, you know, if we can help in some way to, you know, bring. To bear some some relief, I think that that would be something we should keep on our collective radars. Aside from that, there's really been no actionable. Potential options put forward, but yeah, just kind of a status update.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Lewis?
Okay, I met with, well. City manager Scott and I met with the new leadership at the Beulah Union School District as part of the joint.
Joint use.
Facility Committee. It was a good, fairly quick meeting. We discussed some obstacles to just the average Joe renting the facility. With regard to insurance requirements and some event requirements, so we're reviewing those and we're going to bring them back for a meeting.
Wonderful, yeah. Attended the three C sent a few of us to New Mexico to see the pattern wind energy farms that take place in New Mexico. Really big windmills and it's a lot of nausea to take the bus to go out and see them. But yeah, it was very much, as we continue to look to bring more renewables to the state, there's been a big move with allowing a Western market that allows interstate agencies to be transferring power between each other. So if renewables are generated in one state, they can become participatory in our state. And so there's a really. A lot of still work taking place in the renewable space as we continue to bring that online for three CE, which is our energy provider from the counties around us. And then we, a few of us were able to attend the League of Cities Conference in Long Beach, so I thank you for all your attendance. And for the staff who was able to attend for that exchange of ideas taking place. Do you want to acknowledge that Beulah got at least three shout outs while we were there? I see that the city manager for solving was here and I didn't hear any of solving brought up there, so I just thought. It just felt good to take it. And then finally, I did want to make sure I forgot to bring this up, but if we had a meeting with the Village Senior Apartments and they will be moving in November first is the goal for that, assuming everything they, sounds like they've had their clearance for occupation at this point.
That's what I understand, yes.
So November first, we anticipate move in beginning and there'll be a stagger with it as they work through leases and things of that sort, but we'll start seeing people moving in November first and being able to welcome our new neighbors. Or old neighbors who are just coming in.
Be able to go take a look at that?
So we are still in conversation with them. They're on a tight timeline with it, but the hope would be there will be at least a ribbon cutting they're looking at in January. But I think that if we can get in ahead of time before they start occupancy, I'll let you know we've added that request as well. But if we can get that going, I'll pass along. All right, moving along from our committee reports, we will now move to our business items and our first item tonight is number nine, consideration of arts and culture project applications. And tonight we have two before us, the Beulah Springs or Strings Project and the Beulah Mosaic Project, and we have staff contact Recreation Coordinator Allison Fiery to take the charge.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. I am here tonight to recommend funding for two projects, both from returning applicants. And if I may, I'd love to give you a brief overview of both of these projects as well as the committee's recommendations. And then the applicants are here to answer any questions that you might have for them. The first proposal is the Beulah and Strings Project. This would be run by the Santa Barbara Strings. Santa Barbara Strings is a nonprofit organization providing comprehensive training for musicians ages four to nineteen. In three progressive levels of string orchestras, traditional music and chamber ensembles. It's open to all students and they aim to inspire a lifelong understanding of. And appreciation of classical music of all errors, eras, and this is especially important because there is no other program in Santa Barbara County at this time devoted to training. In the string instruments and we no longer have string instruments programs in the elementary schools as well. This particular project will build upon the successful pilot program from the past year. And adds on a new one-on-one lesson component for students who completed the beginning course. The first part of the project is a sixteen week comprehensive introduction to the elements and the logistics of playing a string instrument for Beulah and kids ages four, excuse me, five to fourteen and their families. Students will choose their string instrument, a choice of a violin or a cello and receive hour-long weekly group lessons after school at the Beulah and Rec Center. The second part of the project is providing subsidized one-on-one lessons. For the Beulah and kids who have completed the beginning strings course and who are serious about continuing their training. And then at the end of the program, the students will perform a free community recital at the Beulah and Library. The funds requested will pay for instructors to provide weekly group lessons and rehearsals, instrument rental, maintenance and insurance, staff time for organization. Preparation of repertoire and communication with families, music licensing, copies, recital programs, advertising and room rental for rehearsals. And as far as our recommendation from the committee, the Beulah and Strings Project received eighteen thousand in twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five for their project. For their twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six project, they're requesting twenty thousand dollars in funding. Their request would allow for fifteen students to take part in the sixteen week intro course and five students from last year. To continue in their one-on-one lessons. The committee is recommending that city council approve a grant in the amount of fifteen thousand. Which would allow for ten students to take part in the sixteen week intro course. And for three students from last year to continue in their one-on-one lessons. And we also asked them to make a change in their application process this year to include. A participation pledge ensuring that these families would be committed to daily practice and. To attending rehearsals and also an essay just stating why they feel they would be a good candidate for this program. And the second proposal is the Beulah and Mosaics Project. This proposal was brought to us by Veronica Medina and Stacy Curry of Community Clayworks and. Originally, they had proposed two new large-scale public mosaics celebrating native California wildflowers. This would be continuing their mission to enhance the visual landscape of Beulah and with vibrant and meaningful art. The committee loved their work and loved working with them last year, but we did ask that they submit a revised rendering. That would complete the post office project first before they moved on to new locations. That revised rendering is in your packet in attachment two. They received funding in the amount of twenty two thousand dollars and sixty, excuse me, twenty two thousand sixty dollars in twenty twenty four for their previous project. They are requesting thirty thousand nine hundred and forty for this project and the committee is fully in favor of. Funding the complete amount for the completion of the post office project. At this time, if you don't have any other questions for me, I would love to introduce Kyle Lavello with the Beulah and Strings Project.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Allison. Mr. Mayor, honorable council members, it's so good to be back here again. I am so excited that you are considering continuing support for the Beulah and Strings Project. We have our artistic director and founder, Mary Beth Woodruff here, who is, has a very special guest to give you some music, but I just want to say, this is really. Providing the foundation to in the future have these young people be able to play in string ensembles and maybe one day a string orchestra. So with that, I will hand it over to Mary Beth.
This is Coco, who was six in our program last year, the youngest one there actually. And the one who became the most advanced of any of them, and she is in private lessons with me now. She's had about. A month and a half of them and we are going to just simply play for you so you can hear the fruits of. Our labor that couldn't have happened without all of all of you. The fifteen kids were incredible to work with. We worked with them five on on one, so it was it was three hours of instruction with two different instructors. Because it's very hard to teach these instruments unmasked. They're very feisty, very difficult. And just having fifteen instruments where you have to tune every single string and get the bows ready to go and everything is is a. A project, so.
Just to check, is your father in the back or?
This is Chris, her dad.
Yeah, you want to come behind here so you can get a good angle of it? I feel like you'd like to film this, probably, yeah, so I mean, really. If it's not documented, yeah, so yeah, if you'd like to come around this way maybe and then you can get a good spot for so that.
This is Coco playing what is called the pepperoni pizza variation of Twinkle Twinkle Little Star. We'll leave it up to you to figure out if you can guess why it's called pepperoni pizza. I'm just her backup there, so I don't need the introduction and then she'll start.
Wonderful job. That was great.
We should have music at every meeting.
I know, we'll book you for your next gig. Yes. But did Mr. Bell have anything else to add? I mean, I guess it's hard to follow that on. Oh, did anyone have any questions for Mr. Bell or for Ms. Fiery on the strings item or would you like to do both items and then we'll come back for any questions?
I would like to ask questions about the string program, so whenever that.
Yeah, let's do that right now.
Okay, great. Hi, thank you so much. So congratulations on obviously a really successful private pilot program. It's amazing and it's very exciting to think that that it was so successful. We could have it for a second year. I guess my question is just how are the students like chosen? And then how are the, you said that there was the, like the students that took the course last year will then have the opportunity to continue. Depending on funding to have those one-on-one lessons. So I was just curious, like, is it lottery? Is it first come, first served? Just a little bit more about that.
And so, and you heard Ms. Fiery mention that the committee actually asked us this year to have a little bit restructured. Application process last year being the very first, we didn't know if one person would apply or a hundred. We ended up having last year forty people respond and we could take fifteen. So we we did it on a on a basis of first come, as well as if there were multiple siblings, we tried to not, you know, have both siblings, especially if there was a younger one that they could apply in the future. This year, if you saw in your packet, there is both the, you know. Pledge for the daily practice, but also why you want to learn this instrument and it's really a family essay. Because as as Mary Beth can tell you, learning these instruments is is really a family endeavor. It's parents and. And guardians helping to remind kids to practice, encouraging them and taking care of these instruments because. Dropping dropping that, you know, they can make a big, a big issue, but so. That would be the the case this going forward, that the application process, so we have a panel from Santa Barbara Strings. Being able to whittle the those numbers down. We also, with the returning students, if there's funding, we would again first. Contact all of the past years recipients. We're very lucky. We were able to get a small grant from the Valley Foundation. And that is helping to subsidize, you know, lessons currently, but with the Beulah and Strings Project, it would again be only Beulah and students that would receive that.
So the fifteen prior, like they're going to go through an application process to like basically the participation pledge. And then see like you'll, that your panel will judge like, okay, these three.
We would just want to make sure that that finances are not prohibitive in this case. That their socioeconomic level is such that they can't afford one-on-one lessons, which is what we've run into in Santa Barbara hugely. And we're trying to fight that battle because you can't really get to any level of expertise on these instruments without one-on-one. There's no sort of idiot's guide to playing the violin, unfortunately. So and the teamwork that's going on, that the citizenship that is happening between the kids, the work ethic itself, we feel. Is it bleeds into everything that these these kids are doing and we sort of saw it in the room. Our concert at the Beulah and Public Library space was overflowing to the outside. And the families were just thrilled for this and we don't want for Beulah and in the North County to be in any way underserved. For Santa Barbara County and at present, there's no orchestra up here. There's there's none, none of that. And that's our hope is for this to be an absolute jewel in the North County.
Great, well, thank you so much. And I really appreciate the fact that you looked at your application process from last year and like did some reflection and and honestly now want to grow the program. I mean, that's really gonna. Like the goal of getting those one-on-one lessons will probably drive a lot of those kids in the beginner course, so that's really wonderful. So thank you.
So lucky to have Mary Beth, been a Valley resident over twenty years and again, such an accomplished musician and a great teacher. So when you see her teach, it's, I mean, uses humor and everything else, it's just.
Well, obviously the proof is in the pudding right there. I mean, I like. I have no other questions, so thank you so much for your time.
I have a question.
No, I'm done. Thank you.
You.
Councilmember Sanchez, did you have a question?
Yeah, I was with the forty students applied and only.
No, forty applied last year for the introductory program. We were able to take fifteen based on the funding and and again. A major piece is limited, as Mary Beth said, by the number of instructors, you know. If we had fifty other instructors, then we could, we could have more kids, but again, you can't, you can't teach a room full of twenty kids these instruments.
A basic number in in Santa Barbara County, in order for a child to have one-on-one lessons and participate in an orchestral program. None of which is provided in the schools in California anymore, unfortunately, and they are in the Midwest and the East Coast. And we've fallen way behind that is is approximately thirty eight hundred dollars per kid per year. So that's what we're looking for, for, you know, full scholarships of our of our kids in in Santa Barbara where it's even, you know, harder to afford a home and all of that.
So did any of the other over fifteen come in and pay retail or?
No, so yeah, last year it was, it was completely, completely free for everyone. The the suggestion, we and we spoke to the the committee about this, again, having that sliding scale so that those. If there are people who are able to to, you know, pay a small amount. That would be something they could, they could donate, but for those who cannot, it would be completely free.
Thank you. Councilmember Hornick?
Yeah, thank you. So I just wanted to be clear about following up with Councilmember Sanchez talked about. So even if there was more funding, you couldn't take more than fifteen kids because of the lack of teachers, is that right?
We could take more. We would figure that out. It would be more hours that we would need to to schedule them. And yeah, just just being conservative in in the beginning to make sure that that we have all of our ducks in a row and that we're not, you know. In any way. Stretching things in in the community in terms of our needs and the needs of the community, but certainly we love for it to be bigger.
No, I appreciate that that conservative approach. I guess my question, I have a follow-up question for Allison, if she's still around. Thank you. What, do you know why the Arts and Culture Committee cut down the recommended award amount?
And there were two reasons. The first was the number of people served for the amount of money being spent. When we looked at the other applications coming through this year, we're serving much larger numbers of people for the for similar asks. And the second part was that. And the second part was that we had gotten some community feedback that not all of the participants were practicing or attending rehearsals regularly. And so that was something why we asked them to revise the application this year to make sure that a kid really had a buy-in to the program. And so then we thought, well, we'd rather have, let's say, ten people who are fully committed, are going to come all the time, really invested in learning, than be funding and having some kids not show up to rehearsals or, you know, kind of die out at the end of the process. A lot of the parents were saying they had stopped practicing about halfway through. So we just wanted to make sure. We think it's such a great program. We just really want the students involved to be passionate about it and have some sort of buy-in.
Thank you. Any questions, Vice Mayor Lewis? The only one I had actually was just from a funding system. I know we with this program, when you introduce a educational program like this, the intent is that a child would need to stay multi-years, you know, you want to get someone at the age of five, six, seven, and they stay with it. Is the goal to main? I guess it's kind of when we think about a funding model is the idea that over time, we would want a program like this that we wouldn't have you coming back every time for grants are meant to be for other projects. Is the goal to find a like move fully into a fully funded program? Or is the idea to I just wanted to know from a sustainability standpoint, I guess.
Sure, sure. And I'll speak and Mary Beth can jump in. Are the the organization Santa Barbara Strings is countywide. We have kids even from Ventura who drive up on Sundays. We have our a full three different orchestra levels and they are doing group instruction and practice on Sundays in at a church in Santa Barbara. And so as kids in this area get to the point where they're they're ready to to do that. And and Coco is definitely, you know, could join, you know, this season. It's getting that that beginning learning the basics of the instrument and then being part of that orchestra. And that's that's what we're trying to build on. So it's it's not necessarily we're trying to, you know, create recreate all of what we do with Santa Barbara Strings here in Beelton, but to provide that basic foundational support and including those ongoing one-on-one lessons to bring up the the educational capacity in the strings to be able to join the larger orchestral movement.
And just to give a little bit more depth to what Allison was saying, we had a waiting list in place. So when it was discovered, there were some some neurodivergent kiddos who parent the parents said, you know, this is too much for our, we really need to be one-on-one. Those were the cases where we we replaced some of those kids with the the waiting list kids. And and so there was there was never an empty slot in there. In fact, there were many people wishing to get in there. And we had, I I would say, the majority of the kids, they had weekly practice charts they were filling out and their reward system and everything. And and from my standpoint, it was tremendously positive. We definitely want to vet the families and make sure that they're they're really invested because we're investing so much in it. And I think the interview process and the essay will do just that. But I I felt that for what we were doing in an area that is has never done this, that it was it was wildly successful on our our behalf and how we came away from it.
Wonderful. So this serves kind of as an incubation pit place.
It's an introduction to expose them to to what they're not getting up here. And we don't have a, you know, Beelton Symphony Orchestra that that these kids can go even here at the Symphony Orchestra to Yes, exactly. I love the way you think. So so it's it's an introduction to them. And then everybody that that plays these instruments at a serious level has to have the one-on-one lessons. And then they're in a group program as well. And it's our hope that Santa Barbara Strings, they can either go down there or that we'll start start a satellite program up here. Quite possibly when we see the numbers bloom and we're just just kind of waiting to see that happen.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
So next, let's see, we could should we do these in two separate phases probably for that with for promotions and things of that sort?
It's up to you.
Yeah, we always let's close out strings and then we'll move to mosaic. So we don't have to hold too many things. Let's do string. Let's do music to art. Keep not that we should keep them separate culturally, but we should do that for the sake of this voting. So let's bring it back for council discussion. I don't see any public comment on this item. So we can bring it for council discussion and a possible motion on the strings project to begin with. So any discussion or possible motion or
I'll discuss. I'm sorry, Allison, you want to you gonna move?
You can discuss.
I just wanted to say that to me, this is the exact intent of the Arts and Culture Committee and the budget. I think that exposing kids who would otherwise not have access to string music and to get a chance to play and learn and and frankly, try it out. And maybe it's not for them, but then have somebody else take the spot. That's exactly the intent of the Arts and Culture Committee and Budget. So if you guys need more funding, I'm happy to to look at that and consider contributing to that. I I think that we should fund more than the Arts and Culture Committee recommended. I think we should fund them their full ask. I'm inclined to actually even increase it. I also think that some of the things that you know, the other things that we we fund, I think, are also valuable, obviously. Otherwise, I wouldn't vote to fund them. But but really, this, like I said, getting children exposed to arts and culture that they wouldn't have access to is exactly the intent of this this predatory spend. I also want to ask the applicants about reaching out to council when you have events like the concert. I didn't know that was happening. That would have been so cool to see and know. And you know, I mean, I don't do social media much, but I do know some of my colleagues are very, very adept at that skill set. So I mean, just drop us a line. Let us know. It'd be cool to know about those things. So that's where I'm at. I'm I'm ready to to fully fill in their ask and and even consider helping it.
Okay. Any other further discussion or a possible motion?
So it is motion.
We haven't formally had anyone say motion yet. So there's still options for discussion if anyone wants to
I'll I'll ask, do we have the funds to to fund them the extra five thousand? Because they asked for twenty, they recommended fifty fifteen. Do we have?
Looks like we have seventy nine four four three, yeah.
I know, but I wasn't sure. I mean, I wasn't sure, like, how many other projects are down that like pipe and
And that's that's the problem, right? That's part of the, I think, part of the methodology that the committee was using was trying to forecast what other requests are coming down the pipeline. They may not know about yet because we're still relatively early in the fiscal year. There was a bit of carryover from the prior fiscal year. So they're probably wanting to hold back on some of those funds to fund other projects coming down the road. So that's that's probably what was part of their mindset when they were going through this. And I would suggest maybe it'd be part of yours. And if you if you if you'd like to increase the funding, the funding is there, but it does preclude some funding for some other project down the road.
I would just jump in on that, too. Not to you know, flog a dead horse or whatever, but you know, by their own statistics, forty applied, fifteen taken. These are also, you know, they had to pick and choose between brothers and sisters, you know. Oh, brother's doing it this year, maybe next year for you. I really, as they said, it's a whole family affair. Like, if your brother is practicing, that's going to take up a large, large amount of bandwidth in the household, right? So I just think it'd be great if the families, like, scissors applied, they could also do it. Yeah. And I think it's a worthwhile spend. So that's it.
I think it's also prudent for us to to mention that we have had leftover funds historically the last couple of years. So I'd be inclined to motion to approve their entire twenty thousand dollar ask, simply because I agree with what, you know, the points Hudson's bringing up, or sorry, Councilmember Hornick. And also, we've had funds left over previous years. So I would rather get closer to the end of the year and have arts and and culture come to us and say, hey, we really want to do this, but we can't. What do you guys think? Rather than we could have done that because we have money left over. So that'd be my
I was gonna, I know we have motion to tell. I was just gonna ask if I was gonna ask if call to Ms. Fiery, if possible, while we it's there, it's long, we got it.
I'm not stressed.
If you're forecasting from your projects, are you anticipating any idea of what's in the in the pipeline of what you're anticipating coming across our
We have probably about seventy thousand and asks still coming in our next two meetings.
And you meet every quarter?
Yes, sir.
So those would be the two meetings of this fiscal year still to have?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
And I will say, too, one other thing to address what Councilman Hornick was saying was that they also admire the fact that they found other funding this year. So as a second-year funding project, part of the reason we did recommend less was that our hope is to give somebody the start of a project and to give them legs to then be able to go to other people and get funding so that people aren't looking at us as the primary source every year. And so I think that was a big push on on the part of the council this year, or the committee, excuse me, to start to encourage people to say, we still want to be part and we still and each year, maybe we can still give you a little bit, but we're going to push baby birds out of the nest a little bit to find other things. So I think that was also part of their
I appreciate that.
Thought process.
Thank you very much. All right. But we do have a motion on the table for funding in the amount of twenty thousand dollars by Vice Mayor Lewis. And we have a second from Councilmember Hornick.
Okay, Vice Mayor Lewis.
Hi.
Councilmember Hornick.
Hi.
Councilmember Mead.
Hi.
Councilmember Sanchez.
Hi.
And Mayor Silva.
Hi. Thank you very much for coming tonight. So we'll move on from strings to mosaic. This is the fun part of the meeting to have for this. And so we will come back to did we want to have the introduction from? Did you have anything further to ask? Or would you, okay, great. Okay, good. Then you're back on.
Mayor Silva, councilmembers, I'm Veronica Medina. I own Community Clayworks at the End of Industrial Way.
And I'm Stacy Curry, a mosaic artist and employee at Community Clayworks. We were and are incredibly honored to be here tonight and to have been able to fulfill last year's mosaic that we proposed and created and is up on this building next to us. We had anticipated this year that we might branch out and start to and we started looking around Beelton for other locations. And then in conversations with Allison and the committee, requested that we move back to our original proposal for the full post office motif that we had created. And it's actually incredibly exciting for us to to be considered to to complete the wall in our original vision. Our our goal was and continues to be creating meaningful meaningful art for the community, creating a place where locals and visitors might and feel inspired and proud of. And we hope that you enjoyed driving and walking by it. And and we're excited to be here tonight and and looking forward to answering your questions.
I know I have questions, but let's start part of it just to purpose. I will eventually ask questions. So we'll go with Councilmember Hornick. Any questions here? Oh, I just want to make sure. So before we had a motion come up, I just want to make sure we had.
I have to wait my turn.
To your asking a question.
Oh, my gosh, that never happens yet. But Councilmember Sanchez, any questions?
I was wondering if any other businesses are around or if we had any other interest in doing any projects in other parts of town or has this brought anybody in to say, we want to do a project or or is that anything that you're pursuing to be?
The owner of the it's like the UPS drop-off print shop that's right here, that actually already has
Oh, Matt.
That already has the murals on it. He had mentioned, you know, at some point, wanting something on his wall. So that's that's someone that, you know, mentioned it and came forward and was really positive about the project and excited that it was across the street. So that's sort of the only sort of of his own volition mentioning, I would love to do that someday.
My other question is, does it city?
Oh, sorry.
Oh, go ahead.
We were approached by the Friends of the Beelton Library. They were hoping to tie in with the aesthetic of having mosaics in different places and coming up with a design that honored the fact that the property used to be a dairy farm. And just working with them to see how it could also be something interesting. But that would be, you know, there are other organizations that 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 would still be city-wise, not private, but it there is we're happy to say sort of a a community engagement in the idea of having a unified aesthetic where the mosaics can kind of be this tasteful pop of color in different places.
Thank you. And then does this, is there any special permit that anyone, but he would need if somebody wanted to put a mosaic? I don't is that something that the that the city has any rules for or against to to decorate a building? I don't, I just don't know if we have.
Unless we're talking about a mosaic that takes that that serves the function of signage for the particular business, probably not, but we would want to have our planning department review any such proposal prior to it going on, just to make sure we're we're in line with city code.
I just didn't know we had any program and generally there are I appreciate it. Thank you.
Councilmember Mead.
So is it just the two of you that would be installing these giant mosaics? I mean, what's the workforce here? I mean, it's a massive project. It's beautiful. I'm not from California, so poppies to me are just like quintessentially California. So I was just curious about, is it literally just the two of you?
We put our husbands to order.
Okay, okay. So maybe maybe the four of you?
My daughter helps us.
Okay, okay. All right. I was just curious if it was, okay, I was just curious about like how it actually gets accomplished. And so do you have a, I read through this, but is there like a timeline for it? Or maybe I missed it? Like, what's the, if the funding is approved, do you have like a like what's your end? Like, when do you think it would be finished?
So realistically, we would start building it. So I'm currently expanding into a new space.
Congratulations. Wonderful.
So until that's transition is complete, realistically, we could start this in January and hope to have the installation in June.
All the whole thing finished in June, like all of it? Those husbands are working very hard and daughters are working very hard, apparently. Okay, I was just, thank you. Thanks for the the timeline idea. I appreciate it.
Vice Mayor Lewis? I had a couple. One, just I I see the the proposal and it's at thirty thousand nine forty. I know that was for the other two. Does it just transfer over comfortably?
This is slightly larger, but we're excited to do it. So you know, there's some part that where we just feel good about doing it. So it's fine by us.
That's very kind. But if this had been a proposal for the wall, what would the proposal have been? If you had to
The square footage would have been slightly higher.
Such as
I mean, I want to say maybe
Numbers, but I'm not.
It just happened to have numbers, perfect.
Projecting it, we want it to be at the same scale as everything else. And we would and and, you know, it's one of those tricky things because it's an organic form and we've got fronds. So they take more work, but square footage wise, you know, it's like a, we're trying to just be conservative and fair about what we're doing. So it's, I would say, what, like a twenty?
Yeah.
Margin. It wasn't something outrageous.
Sixty-eight square feet and where this is probably more like eighty, but as she said, it's organic in nature and
I'm so sorry, though. I don't, what would be the number? If you could, like financially, I guess, you're a small business in Beelton, locally owned. And I just want to make sure that though it's very gracious that we at least are operating from the standpoint of respecting the value of what the project is. Now, if the funding is, you know, but like we should, as a council, know what the cost is for the project that you're looking to do to make sure that that is at least reflected in the work. So if that's possible, I know I probably should have asked you this ahead of time and not just like on the spot in the moment here. Okay, the other question, I know you did this last year from a standpoint of the finances with it, did it, what is the annually, everything gets more expensive? Assuming we'd like this program to continue to grow and, you know, we're looking at this hopefully in the year, future years, continue to have this. I love that fact that so many people come here and it's like the poppy piece and why aren't there more? What was the cost differential you'd say from the work you did last year to this year in terms of overall increase of costs, whether it's operation, you know, I mean, like, is it that every year you're seeing materials go up by five to ten percent, ten to fifteen?
Materials go up a little bit. Frankly, because we live in a rural area, our freight cost is always something that we have to consider. And that fluctuates based on gas prices. But I would say I think the only difference would be that as as seasoned as we are as potters and ceramic artists, as mosaic artists, we hadn't had something that was just under our name to point to, to prove that we were capable of what we were saying to do. I think we lowballed our our labor. We severely lowballed our our labor, but we knew that that would probably happen. And that was, you know, kind of what I think every single mosaic artist we have spoken to all over the country that makes these mosaics does because we did a tremendous amount of research to try to figure out where we should price ourselves. And we spoke to people that do large-scale works in New York and in San Francisco and in smaller areas to try to come up with something that was reasonable. So we're trying to just make that mark now and and do it out of a square footage that might make sense to actually try to, you know, be paid fairly for our labor.
Yeah, it's basically that because if we were to say we've moved you here and then let's say next year you came back with the the two projects, I'm just wondering, like, we came at thirty ninety-four, are you like, it just would be something like, oh, had, you know, it's now going to be thirty-five or forty thousand, you know, everything gets more expensive. I'm just trying to forecast out so that we have an informed decision to make sure we're respecting all of that there.
I appreciate that.
I stalled as long as I could. Oh, oh, good. And then I believe Miss Fiery would like to make a comment, too, at some point. Is that correct? Okay, so we'll have Miss Fiery join us, too.
Okay. I just remember this from last year, which I mean, I think it's not a project. I was stoked that you guys brought it last year and then, you know, I was excited to be able to walk. I thought there was some talk about like, I have a couple, it was a couple-pronged about like, I have a couple, it was a couple of pronged question. There was some talk about trying to like, uh, involve the community at some level or the children at some level as well. Did that occur? And I, I remember last year, if my memory serves me correctly, it was going to be hard for the actual building of the mosaic on the wall to involve the youth in this project because it's like, don't put that there, we need to hear. Uh, but is it like, so are you considering that? For fresh memory on that. And also like, have you seen any sort of increase in traffic from this installation? Because my, my prompt question to the staff would be like, I know it's a public building and I, I do you think that's like part of the corridor where people are, you know, headed to our, our services like the library and, and a river view park, whatever else? So people see it and I just wonder if they know that Community Clayworks is just down the corner on, on Industrial Ave. Or if there's maybe something we could do related to that.
I don't think it's brought me more foot traffic in literal feet, but it, it brought me a lot of Instagram attention. So in, in that regard, at least within the ceramics world, it, it was incredibly well received. Um, and some of the manufacturers of the materials we used were very excited about it. And in terms of like the clay worlds, I would say that we got a significant amount of attention for it. But in terms of actual like it helping business, I feel like being at the end of Industrial Way, you know, we, we still struggle to try to get people down there. All the businesses do.
And so this is sort of a bigger like, sort of deliberative question, but like, I mean, I know we don't want to sort of be putting signs up saying this may possible by Community Clayworks is just down the corner, but like, maybe we do, like maybe we're not part of the mosaic, but maybe like let people know because that's where people are going on their bikes and walking when they come visit and they're headed down that way. And if Industrial Avenue is our organic economic corridor, it might behoove us to let people know that this was made possible and they have their doors open. Um, so I know that was not a question, it kind of was.
I'm mostly just watching the turn to see where he reels us in right now. We're still good. No, you haven't hit the bridge yet.
And so the, the other part of the question that was like involving the kids in some way, if that was possible.
So we had open studios and we tried to advertise it as best we could to just invite people to the studio to see what the process was like and have people experiment with like cutting mosaics and putting texture. It would very minimal attendance. Um, maybe that's just the timing that we put it up. In terms of the actual piece, we just need to ensure that it's the right quality, right compression tile, like installation, like, you know, it's that, that would be more complicated. I've done mosaics with local schools and it's something that I'd be really excited to branch out to. It's kind of where I started doing mosaic work, um, in public schools. So, you know, that would be sort of a different avenue at some point. And again, it'd be at least for me, I like clay and it, you know, it lasts forever. So it'd be really fun for schools to do projects together that grow, you know, little by little over the years, but that would be a separate project.
It looks much better than the newspaper racks that were there.
I agree.
And so I think we may have the number and then we have Miss Spire who wanted to make a comment, but did you have, did you have, did your calculation?
It's a rough number. We would have, we'd have to sit down and really get the ruler out a little better, but it would roughly increase the price by twenty thousand.
It would be twenty thousand dollars more to pivot over there. Okay. Thank you very much.
Assuming that it, that we've reached the eighty square foot number when we measure, we'd want to give you a very accurate count before we just throw out that number, but that's rough.
Okay. Thank you very much. Um, any other questions for the applicant before Miss Spire comes up? Okay, thank you. Miss Spire?
We did also let the applicants know this, but Candace Signa approached, um, the committee to say that she would sponsor three thousand dollars if this is funded by council, she would be happy to donate an, an additional three thousand dollars towards this project.
Thank you very much. So many numbers and so much clay. Bring it back for this, uh, discussion. So, uh,
I just had a comment and the, uh, they just had those big fires down, sort of palisades and all that. And one of the stories was the school that burned and the tiles were still there that the kids they, uh, put in the, on the wall and, and, uh, that's, I just wanted to make that point that how important it is. And like you said, to glaze forever. And it's something that it was just a point. Thank you.
So I, I just wanted to say that I agree with Councilman, Councilmember Hornick. This is art and your name should be on it. I mean, that's all artists put their name on their work. And even if it's something simple like, like a, a tile plaque that's like courtesy of Community Playworks, comma Beelton, like that, this is something that you should have your name on. I mean, it's a beautiful gift to Beelton. And so I, I don't know how we could work that in, or if that's like a separate proposal that you would create. Yeah, okay. And so I just wanted to say that I fully support that idea and I think that it's important to not only give you the, the credit as artists and the work that you're putting into it, but also to promote your business because you're creating something that's amazing for Beelton and it, you should get the credit for it. And that's going to be here to your point a very long time. So, I mean, I think it's just a thoughtful idea.
Yeah, I, I'd be happy to move to.
Wait, we're still caught talking. Give us some time here. You guys get so, so quick. Any other comments or discussion for this? Vice Mayor Lewis?
Just a question to your, to your question, if they're asking for thirty thousand nine hundred and they're telling us that the actual cost is twenty thousand dollars more, is that something we want to consider?
So, yeah, what I was going to say is that I, you know, I, that's off the cuff numbers being asked for it, but I agree, one, that there should be signage, but I also think that we should be thoughtful in paying a small business accurately for what the project is, and I appreciate their willingness to pivot. So I would at least say I'm open to the idea of having this funding discussion right now, since we know it's calculated, but then inviting space or creating space for them to revise and come back so that they could maybe tell us after they calculate and crunch numbers a bit better, an ability to, an addendum or something. I don't know. I just would love for there to be a chance for them to actually sit down, get a formal proposal, make sure that we're paying a business accurately to what the goods are doing. I appreciate the generosity of this, then wanting to contribute some. There was a lot of free, in free labor that took place with that last one being done. And I just don't want us to get used to the idea that these projects can be funded by the sake of sacrificing proper pay for the artist doing it. And so if we're going to do these projects, we should do them correctly. That's the least we should do, at least respective times. So I don't know how we would handle that.
Mr. Mayor, if I could make a suggestion, a, as I mentioned, uh, during discussion of the previous item, uh, the funding that's allocated to the Arts and Culture Committee is, um, is, is what the committee uses to determine which projects are brought forward to the city council. If the council routinely increases the amount of funding that the, the committee recommends, the committee, the committee's ability to continue bringing things forward, it would be reduced. So I would, I, I, I completely understand where you're coming from. I would suggest if that's the direction you want to go, that maybe, uh, you direct staff to come back to the city council with a business item to discuss a budget adjustment uh, or a, just a separate expenditure allocation, authorization to cover the difference here in what we've got, leaving the balance of the Arts and Culture Committee budget alone at this point.
I'd be very comfortable with that. And I think that would allow them some autonomy. I do recognize that oftentimes the committee makes a recommendation of like, but we can do more. And then it's like, well, what's the commit? Yeah. So I then would say to me, yes, I would like that. And then to allow the city staff to work with the applicant to figure out a separate line item for that, to ensure that we are able to, to review that. So that's where I'm at in this place is I would say yes to the thirty thousand and then to what the city manager just suggested. That's my opinion at this time.
Is that a motion?
Okay, you're going to make a fair how to motion that. I would motion to approve the funding of thirty thousand dollars nine hundred and forty as recommended by the Arts and Culture Committee for the project on the post office. In addition, it have staff work with the applicant to bring back a separate business item to discuss further the, the disparity between the project as discussed, funded, as funded, et cetera, et cetera, and actual costs. At all.
I understand what you're getting at and we can comply with that.
Good luck putting that in the minutes. I'm so hope there's a second. I was going to have to say that again.
Oh, second.
Oh, thank God.
Okay, Mayor Silva.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Lewis.
Aye.
Councilmember Hornick.
Aye.
Councilmember me.
Aye.
Bless you. Now it's Member Sanchez.
Aye.
Thank you very much. It's really great to have all this art being brought in our community.
Thank you.
For those in the audience, it's been a very artistic night. Thank you all for being here.
Do I need to announce recusal?
Sure, I, I'll help. The next item involves the Santa Inez Valley Aquatics Complex, Count, uh, Vice Mayor Lewis, uh, currently serves, uh, in a senior uh, management role for this, uh, high school district and has to participate on behalf of her employer. Because of that, under the Political Reform Act, she's going to recuse. Uh, this matter does not create a the type of financial interest for which she can stay in the room and speak on it. So she's going to be in the hallway while, uh, discussion goes on. Thank you, Vice Mayor.
We'll see you later.
And before we go forward, are there anyone else who hasn't submitted a speaker card? But yeah, I don't know, one more.
Does anyone? Does anyone need a recess at this moment? Are we all good? We're still good to go? Pumpful of chocolate and hydrated? I stalled as long as I could for you, man, but we can just, uh, how's everyone's night going? Here we go.
Thank you. All right, I think.
Really got it in there under the wire. Where'd I go, guys? Okay. All right. And seeing no further, we will now bring the item number ten. Consideration of a pledge of financial support for the San Luis Valley Aquatics Complex with our staff contact being City Manager Scott Wolf.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. You're all aware of the situation right now where the, the high school district, the city of Beelton, the city of Solvang and the, uh, uh, well, the county of Santa Barbara and the Chumash tribe are working uh, to raise funds in order to build a, a new aquatics complex at the high school. The goal is to, uh, supplement the one pool that's there right now with a second pool. The structure for that pool has already been purchased and is in storage here in the valley. Uh, but the, um, ancillary work that goes along with the installation of that pool, as well as rehab of the existing community pool, or excuse me, existing high school pool and, um, some other facilities that are essential to the operations of an aquatics complex need to be considered. There is a considerable amount of funding that needs to be raised for that. At this point, the estimate is somewhere north of thirteen million dollars. In efforts to, um, help ensure that, uh, fundraising takes place as well as it can, the Aquatics Foundation has asked that the cities, uh, make a pledge of funds in the amount of four hundred and fifty thousand dollars each uh, to demonstrate community support for this project. So that other donors taking a look at this can feel like the community has, for lack of a better term, skin in the game and is not simply relying on, on, uh, the, the, uh, individual donors to fund this. The, uh, four hundred and fifty thousand dollar pledge was, uh, made by the city of Solvang some months ago. Uh, there were a number of conditions placed upon that pledge, essentially just to ensure that the funding would not be spent until such time as the remaining funding was raised by the foundation and the high school. Uh, so that the, uh, the funding would be released at the time that groundbreaking for this project occurred. Uh, there are some other, other conditions in there as well that are noted in your staff report. Uh, at this time, uh, seeing as how we have a full city council and we have an adopted budget for the, the year and, and a better financial picture than what we had, uh, what we were looking at back at the first part of the year. It, it's time for the city council to take, to consider that if you're, if you're wanting to do that tonight. Again, the request from the Aquatics Foundation is four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Staff is recommending that at the very least, the conditions that were imposed by the city of Solvang on their pledge be, um, be mirrored with a pledge that the, that the city of Beelton would, would put forward. But, um, as it is the city's money, you are more than welcome to put whatever conditions upon that funding you would like. So I am happy to answer any questions. My involvement in this has been relatively limited up to this point, but we do have our representatives from the Aquatics Foundation here, the city manager from Solvang is here. And I'm sure there are others who I haven't quite recognized, um, that, uh, would be happy to speak on this as well. So, um, I'm going to conclude my remarks right here. I'm happy to answer any questions you have, but there is a wealth of knowledge here in the audience to, to, uh, help me out.
And, um, I was going to see first if there are any direct staff questions for right now, or if it would be, might be better to have go through all the public comment that could activate with just further context and then save staff or save questions after public comment, if that works for everyone. Great. Then let's start up with our first comment tonight coming from Miss Judith Dale.
Thank you. Um, and thank you for all the cultural things you're doing. This is near and dear to my heart. I've lived in Beelton since nineteen fifty-three and, uh, I love this council. You know, you're making Beelton a real city and a real place to live. On that note, I grew up, there was no pool. Nothing. We did have off the spillway of Kachuma, we, there was swimming, but that got closed. And having grown up here without any aquatic things and raising my sons here without any aquatic, uh, if I didn't teach at UCSB, they would not know how to swim. Because, you know, they went with me in the summer. So to make a long story short, by God, we need this pool. We need, and, um, we're working on transportation from Beelton to the pool. So children can get there, seniors can get there. It's not just the pool that, that this committee is doing. It's the whole thing of making it operate and getting the people there. So we're asking you to support this. I could stand up here and whine and whine and whine about my history with trying to get a pool in Beelton. I won't do that, but please support this project. It, it will enhance the quality of life for our citizens. And when I was growing up, actually two of my classmates from Beelton drowned at the beach because they'd never had swim lessons. And that's ridiculous. So quality of life and, um, recreation, we need this pool. Please fund it. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Miss Dale. Next up, we have Lisa Palmer.
Good evening, Mayor Silva, members of the council. Thanks for, uh, taking this item up this evening. I first wanted to say thank you to the city for the support. You've lent to this project for years now, both your recreation staff. You passed a resolution of support earlier this year. This financial commitment, as your city manager outlined, is another signal to your residents and the community that you are invested in, you know, water safety, learn to swim, recreation and providing that opportunity for your uh, residents here. So, um, just really briefly, we're proposing a two pool complex on the high school campus. A new community recreation pool where the existing pool is today. That would be warmer water for learn to swim, seniors, you know, recreation swim, uh, during the day. So the other part of this is that this will be a community uh, asset that is open to the community during the school day. We've designed the facility where you can have school competition and use during the day and community use as well. So, um, really you've got some other speakers here. You've got information. I'm happy to answer questions. We of course, uh, look forward to your continued partnership. Ideally, that includes this financial commitment. Are entertaining this evening. And, um, thank you.
Thank you very much. Next up, we have Mr. Randy Murphy.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, Randy Murphy, City Manager of Solvang. No relation to your esteemed city attorney, as far as I know. My paternal grandfather disappeared in nineteen thirty-four, so you never know. Anyhow, um, I'm here obviously to speak in support of the, of the, uh, city's contribution to the project. Um, I helped lead the effort to get the city of Solvang to do the same and helped establish the guardrails that are there. Um, I'm also serving, uh, uh, full disclosure on the fundraising committee for the pool. So, um, taking my city manager solving hat on and putting my fundraising, uh, hat for the, for the, the, the project on. Um, I, I encourage you to support the pool in an amount of at least what the city of Solvang has contributed or pledged to contribute. The hope is to help leverage that, those funds and get the tribe or tribal involvement financially as well as the county. So as we take the lead in the, in the affected jurisdictions and that will help, um, encourage private donations. So if you have any questions about, you know, how we got the number of four hundred and fifty thousand. So if you have any questions about, you know, how we got the number of four hundred and fifty thousand or why we selected that, or any other thing about what the city of solving has done, then if you have that question.
I would love to hear that.
That number came up because that's what we contributed to the solving senior center. And that's what they had requested from us. So I felt reasonably confident in going to my council and suggesting that number and they agreed. So and if you add four fifty for solving, four fifty or more from Beulah and four fifty from the tribe, that's about ten percent of the money that's needed for this project. So again, we're taking the lead as as a local community and saying, you know, here's what we've done now, again, community private donations, foundation donations and those kinds of things to help us get the rest of the way there.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next up, we have Ms. Wendy Berry.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. My name is Wendy Berry and I'm a resident of Beulah. And I'm here to show my support for the Aquatic Center. I do hope that you choose to support this program. I've been a resident of the valley. I was born and raised here and I actually had to take my two boys to Lompoc to a private pool to have swim lessons. I think it's very important for every child to learn how to swim so you don't have drownings. And it gives the youth and the seniors something to do. And as you know, living in this valley, there isn't a lot to keep the youth busy and off the streets and out of trouble. And this program and the Aquatic Center would be a fantastic asset to the city and the whole entire valley. So please consider supporting the Aquatic Center tonight for at least the four hundred and fifty thousand, if not more. And thank you for supporting the arts and culture, too.
Thank you very much. And then we have Mr. Kyle Adello.
Honorable Mayor, council members. I'm here to speak about this project. And this is a this is a capital request here, but the reason I'm involved in this project continuing since, I don't know how how when I first got involved, but it's been years is the fact that this is built on a solid foundation and it's it's reflecting a successful model from right here in Beulah. The cooperation between the cities and the school district is modeled on the Beulah Recreation Center and the cooperation of the city and the school district here. The district has the land, they have facility staff who can maintain this facility into the future. The cities have staff in the recreation departments that are skilled and trained to do active recreation and programming. And that is a recipe for success. And I I know that this is going to be a successful project. Once we get to that, that reach that mountain of the the fundraising to put it in, we have a wonderful staff in both cities that will, you know, treat this in the way that it deserved to be treated as as a an asset that is funded, you know, in part by both cities, hopefully the county and the tribe as well. But the the plan is there to see it used by the community and all all varieties of activities and programming and that cooperation level is there. It's so much different from a city just on its own saying, we want to put a municipal pool in. That's not the case. The city actually had a study. I'm not sure how long to look at what it would cost and it would be huge, a huge undertaking if any city did it on their own. Having this as a cooperative partnership is the the way to make this work and that's how things in the valley work is with cooperation and I really encourage you to vote yes in in this contribution. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, that's all of our public comments we have. I know I haven't checked properly, but do we have anyone online for public comment?
We do not.
Okay, thank you. So we'll bring it back to council for questions and discussion. And I know that we have some of the experts in the area, so we can keep track of that if there's anyone, but I'm starting with that with Councilmember Hornick. Any questions? Questions for tonight? Good. Councilmember Sanchez?
Yeah, um. The budget question, I guess, where does the money come from? Is that is there something in our budget? When we have a recreation budget and we have other parts, would we just increase our recreation budget?
We would create a separate line item, not necessarily right now, because this would be a a line item for a future year. Probably create a line item and put that in in. I don't know if it's appropriate Chanel is to put it under a capital improvement line item or whether it's it it just to leave it as a as a funding line item. And it would be it would be a general fund expended.
Yeah, I'm I'm thinking it might be best to put it in its own funding. I mean, it's gonna, we need to have the conversation whether this is going to be part of recreation or a new department where we all track the expense. But until it breaks ground, then at that time, we will record it as a capital improvement budget.
And also, when it starts, we have we have a commitment to operate the concession part of it, the city Beulah.
That's been part of that's been part of the discussion for a long time. That's the city's up to now has been the city's preferred and requested role is to work with the foundation and the school district to program at least the community portion of that of the complex. The actual duties of each jurisdiction have not yet been worked out. We had a discussion on this with the various parties on Monday and talked about the need to move a little further down the road before we actually started trying to to identify what individual jurisdictions would contribute to that. But I I think it's it's apparent that each jurisdiction has a role to play and you know, we 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 do a lot of joint efforts with the city of solving with regards to recreation, their recreation and our recreation departments work hand in hand on a lot of projects year round. So it would not be a stretch to assume that the two cities would come up with some way to fund the programming component of the of the complex. And if there were more roles that the city council wanted to be involved with, we could have that discussion with the the committee as it moved forward.
Another thing was the water polo. I think one of the main reasons we were gonna or one of the big benefits was we would have water polo matches. We can't have water polo matches at the high school now. So this this expenditure would act would help the schools and the in the whole. I mean, not everybody, not not just seniors and and benefit a part as a school program. It would expand that. My my grandson played water polo and it was a wonderful program. And so I'll put that in. And I think that was it. I appreciate it. Thank you.
So first, I want to say that I had an ex parte meeting with Lisa Palmer, who's from the SYB Community Products Foundation on Wednesday, October twenty-second. And so I I just want to say that I'm very impressed because coming into this new, I I've learned a lot about this from that meeting, from the resources that staff provided. And obviously, this has been a long time coming since twenty twenty seventeen. And I guess my question and I, Councilmember Sanchez basically talked about it, and I don't know if you want to expand on it. My 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 concern or just my question was like, how do these four entities see the the delineation of these roles and responsibilities coming out? You've got the you've got the school district, you've got Beulah, you've got solving, you have the Aquatics Foundation. Like, what was the plan on how to delineate all out those? And I'm not asking what the actual responsibilities are. I'm just like, what's the plan to delineate that out?
So that question came up at Monday's meeting and there was actually kind of a movement towards starting that discussion. But it was pretty clear from the response that that probably at least two of the agencies that were involved in that discussion were not really ready to move forward with that yet. In lieu of that formal delineation through the the adoption of an MOU or some something along that line, we did talk about an interim measure where the agencies involved might put together a a letter of intent. They're just something that that starts that, you know, establishes the the basics of a framework, but isn't necessarily legally binding, but it it allows us to start moving forward with the idea that certain jurisdictions will have certain responsibilities throughout the process that can be formalized later as part of a memorandum of understanding or something along that line. That's that's where we're at right now. It's still very early in the process. We've got another year or two, I think, at a minimum before fundraising is. Yeah. Yes. Please don't fall.
So, thank you. And to that, our goal is to finish fundraising by the end of twenty-six and also have a construction-ready project approved by the end of twenty-six. So that's the goal. So then construction potentially, or that's something we'd have to work out with the district, get the funding in line. So beginning of twenty-seven, probably twelve to eighteen months for construction. So anyway, so yes, we're nascent, I'll say, and it was so just I want to be clear, though, that that was a big meeting we had on Monday. That's the first time we've had the school district, both cities and the foundation in the same room having the conversation. So that was helping, that's alone is helping us go farther faster. And I'm encouraged that everyone's ready for to at least discuss about what that letter of intent would look like. That's like a draft, you know, that's a draft MOU in the making. So anyway, that's so while it's early in the process, you know, it's October twenty-five, we've got a year to to figure it out, a little over a year, actually, if we're going to be open in twenty-eight.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. And thank you, Scott.
Any more question?
No.
I had, oh, actually, I'm sorry. I shouldn't have you walk away so fast. I had a few for you if you don't mind. Could you walk me through? So the so solving's committed four and fifty thousand dollars and you said that the Chumash Tribe has committed as well?
They they've committed a hundred thousand in twenty nineteen with both cities upping the ante. We're working on additional funding from the tribe.
Okay.
The county of Santa Barbara did dedicate about two hundred and thirty-five, two hundred and forty thousand in twenty nineteen that is sitting in a fund at the county awaiting the project. Again, with the two cities stepping up to four hundred and fifty each, we're gonna be going back and asking them to make that match. I did also want to recognize and acknowledge the San Luis Youth Recreation has been instrumental in getting this project off the ground with the original purchase of the Murtha Pool, looking at committing additional funds and also helping with the fundraising. So there we have a lot of partners, but they are, you know, a longstanding strategic partner in the effort as well.
Thank you very much. Yeah. That was all.
Can I ask a follow-up question? Do you know how much that you are, where are you currently at? You were trying to raise over twelve million?
Your if if you decide to move forward this evening, that would put us over four and a half million.
Okay.
So we still have a long ways to go, but, you know, that's also a significant number to raise in the valley, which gives me confidence that we, you know, again, this is an indicator to some other private donors we have waiting to see what skin in the game, you know, the cities are willing to commit both in the capital and then as we move forward with this operating framework for how it's how we're going to cooperate together in the operations of the facility. I think there's that will help accelerate our fundraising private entities.
Thank you so much. I have a question for staff.
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Anything else? All right. Thank you.
Yeah. So you said the programming is planned to be done by Beulah and solving alike.
Well, that's been the intention along, and I think that's still the the intent. As as I mentioned, though, that that hasn't yet been formalized through part of a memorandum of understanding yet.
Have we baked that into our projected budget forecast at all?
Not yet. We we operate on a a two-year budget and we're at least probably three budget cycles out before we would need to look at that.
Is that expected to be intensive?
We have to discuss what that might look like. I'd need to consult our rec department as well as have solving's rec department do the same. It may require some additional staffing.
Okay. Is what what are we calling this? Sort of a the intergovernmental meetings? What do we call them? It's like the Aquatic Center meetings?
It's yeah, Aquatics Complex. Yeah, I don't know that we have a formal name for it.
Joint Working Group.
There you go.
Of the stars.
Has the Joint Working Group discussed any idea of earmarking any sales tax or TOT tax for this ongoing expenditure?
Not that I've been a part of, but.
So. Okay. That's all the questions that I have.
Great. Seeing no further comments or anything, I would bring it back for discussion and motion discussions and all that, but allow space for discussions, everyone. Let's check with everyone before we put a motion on the table. So go for it. You're already.
I have a question of you, because I look to you as the the development guy alongside Wonderful Mayor. But so in our previous discussions about funding things like the Thousand Trees Initiative or other initiatives, right? I think you've told me and I'm sure you're correcting me where I'm wrong, but you kind of need like a big star to start the ball rolling. Is that right?
Yeah, yeah. So in, gosh, in wearing the fundraising, yeah, you usually need a lead donor or a principal gift donor or it's the donor pyramid. You've really got to find one person up at the top to fill most of it, and then you need a lot of people at the bottom to fill the other parts of it. So you would, in theory, with a twelve to fourteen million dollar gift, if you're leveraging four and a half million, it's more of a discussion about that gives the idea to larger donors out in the community that this is a viable project, which means it would be worth to discuss estate investments and large seven-figure gifts at that point. So I would assume that their fundraising strategy includes an identification of a one or two key seven-figure gift prospects.
It's already part of the four and a half? Okay, so you need additional. I'm seeing somebody who's giving me a hesitant face, but that's okay. So I guess like this is the way I look at this. I see this as a total community benefit and something the community all needs. The way I see this community, I would include Lompoc, but Lompoc has their own aquatic structure. That's Beulah, solving, San Luis, which is the county, and then tribe. Those communities will benefit from this facility. Twelve million dollar ask divided by four is roughly three million dollars per community. I don't mean to laugh. I just I think that it would be wonderful if we could fund the full three, right? Like, that would be a wonderful thing. If if every community member could do that, I don't think that we can. But that's why I asked the question of, has there been any talk of earmarking a lot of the or any of our sales tax or TOT tax for this? Because it also seems like we don't need necessarily to dedicate the funds today. We do need to have some ongoing planning, though, for our budgetary purposes and also the idea that we can afford this in the long run. So that's where I'm at. I'm not ready to sort of commit to any firm idea on that, but like I wanted to sort of start there.
Councilmember Me?
So that gave me a lot to think about, so I'm not going to comment on that. But I I would say that if we're going to go forward with this provisions, the city of solving has laid out some really fine ones that I think that the staff recommended and we should also go with it, but I would like to see of the additional provision added in that like that Beulah, the city of Beulah will have a role in the community programming aspect of the Aquatic Center. I would like that in writing called out as one of the provisions of the four hundred and fifty, if we'd go with that number or another number. Just because I think it's really important that it's recorded that we're all in an understanding, like you mentioned, like it's been the understanding, it's been the understanding. Well, there's a lot of times that understandings get lost sometimes, and I would really appreciate the fact that one of the provisions added is that Beulah, and I'm not saying we can't work with solving, I'm just saying like, I want to make sure that it's in writing that Beulah is doing doing the conditional programming because we do have a great perks and rep department. And 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 kind of reflecting on what Councilmember Hornick said, I assumed that this money was already kind of like budgeted out because this is going to be a future pledge anyway. Because it's not, it wouldn't, if we go with the provisions of solving, it wouldn't happen until groundbreaking essentially, so that probably wouldn't be until twenty twenty-seven. Okay. But I guess, yes, that's a good question of like, if we do fund this going forward, what are we doing to make sure that we have the funding? That's a great question. I would also like to know the answer to that. So thank you for bringing it up.
If the council decides to do this, our finance director will put this in her magic box. And when it is time, she will bring it to the city council to for a for a formal budget adjustment to put it in the fund at the line item it belongs in. And if there if there are issues at that time, she will bring that to the council for discussion as to how to resolve that.
Okay, great. Okay, thank you.
So Chanel, Mr. Mora, I just hate to put you on the spot. But, you know, going into these things, I always like to know clear-eyed as best I can be, you know, what kind of stress this puts on our fiscal reserves and all that stuff, too, and I don't suppose.
you know, what kind of stress this puts on our fiscal reserves and all that stuff, too, and, um, I don't suppose, I suppose you have a comment on that? With your magic box.
Oh, well, um, looking at the projected fund balance, uh, five years from now, um, let me, I just had it up. Um, let me, let me see real quick. Uh, we're looking at probably tw- fiscal year twenty-seven, twenty-eight. Um, so, in the budget, I did a five-year projection, we're looking at four point two million of the target reserve level, so we would be above target. Um, so we can uh, put this kind of pledge in our budget for future years. Uh, there's no problem there.
So, um, it was a little unclear on that. You said there would be four point two million dollars above our expected reserve?
That would be our, that would be our.
That would be our expected reserve.
That would be our target, and the projected fund balance would be nine point six at the end of fiscal year twenty-seven, twenty. So we would be above, at, above the reserve level, five point four million.
Got it. And that's our general fund, so that's everything.
That's general fund.
Right. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilmember Sanchez, any comments?
Um, I, I just think it's, it's a, a big value to have our skin in the game and our, and our commitment, because it goes with all the fundraising and anybody who asks. Um, so I would, I would consider going to five fifty, so that we would at least have a million between us. So at least somebody would say, and it's a hundred thousand more than Solvings, but.
Well, and it's.
Not that we're, yeah.
Not that we're keeping score, but, but it would be a nice number to, it would be a nice number to, um, um, to announce to, um, to future donors that we're not messing around.
So, and I would, I, I'm in that same length, so I was going to say that I'd be willing to commit to the four fifty, I'd be willing to consider five hundred if Solvings and came back and said that they'd be willing to do it. I think it should be a contingent match. I'd be willing to consider it being a four fifty with it being five fifty, should Solvings be willing to come back with a contingent match. I think we should leverage this joint thing, and I would say putting some strings on funding above to ensure that that's, that's better for the entire program. So I would say I'm happy for Beelton to lead the charge with that, but I think that, um, our neighbors down the way should also meet us where we're at with it, because we're all going to benefit from it. So if we're discussing it, it sounds like we all, seems like there's at least a general space of four fifty being normalized.
Mm-hmm.
I would say that if it was, for my support, anything above four fifty, I would want it to be under the parameters as Ms. Mead brought up with, it sounds like that's a big piece for it, too, about the statement or the provision about, uh, Beelton being part of the programming. But anything above four fifty, I'd want it contingent on at least Solvings matching that. I don't know if it can be leveraged from the standpoint of the tribe also being required to now match that to make it very clear that we're all in this together. So I think that the best way to play this game is a, a leveraging situation where it's like, let's all put our money where our mouth is and dive in headfirst.
Let me get Kenny, Kenny Hollister over here.
Well, it's an interesting idea. Uh, I mean, so are you saying? Are you, hold on one second, let me think this out, please. So are you saying that, um, you know, you're, you're open to the idea of funding this more than the four hundred and fifty thousand dollars on the contingency that, you know, Solvings come back and say, hey, you know, they are also willing to match that?
Correct. So what I would say is I'm willing to fund the four fifty with Ms. Mead's, um, provision. And then anything, if there is a desire of this council to do any discussion more than four fifty, I'd want it to be under a contingency, at least that the, that Solvings, if not Solvings, and the tribe is involved as forced leveraging of that match to be done. So that's where I would put the terms of conditions on it for anything above four fifty. And I think that that'd be a useful tool to ensure that all, all groups are working together on this.
Well, um, so I, I am for the four fifty, but I'd also have to say that this is not, um, let me ask you a question, then. What, uh, in our, in our sort of staff report here, uh, the language uses, should sufficient non-city funds be raised to complete the funding required to build the Aquatic Complex prior to June thirty, twenty twenty-eight? Then we'd spend the four fifty. So, when, what is that?
Well, what, what that's actually saying is if the funds, if the non-city funds necessary to build this, uh, to, to complete the project are not raised by June thirtieth, twenty twenty-eighth, then the pledge is withdrawn. That just says, there's a, there's a time limit on how long this pledge can sit there. The, the city council can decide at that point whether to extend that or not, if it's necessary. But that, that just puts a time constraint on the pledge.
But is that a twelve million dollar threshold? Is that what we're talking about? If they haven't raised twelve million dollars by?
Whatever the, whatever the amount is to warrant the, the beginning of a construction, the, uh, the groundbreaking seems to be the threshold there with that language.
And just since we have Mr.
If I may, that was actually also part of my design when the, went to council. We all know that the project has been around since two thousand seventeen, uh, and its language partly due to COVID, and there's a lot of reasons why it hasn't actually materialized yet. I wanted, and, and I recommended the council to adopt that provision, make sure that it was moving forward. One of the other conditions is if it becomes unviable. If for some reason, school says, we don't want you, we're not going to allow you to program, whatever it might be. We've got a couple of outs, but the idea was make sure that project was moving forward. We'd pick twenty-eight because it's supposed to ideally be under construction by then. But if it's not, not saying we won't give them the money, but they've got to come back and ask for it a second time. That's the reason why that date is.
I mean, I'm inclined to, I, I think the people that work with me know me to be fiscally responsible. I tried to be, but I, I think this is a good community benefit, and I think that we should consider putting our money where our mouth is. We have two and a half more years to, to dedicate to budgeting for this spend. So I'm inclined to increase the amount that we pledged to this.
To, to, did you, I feel like so much tonight has been like, did you want to give a number?
Well, it's hard for me to say, because I don't want to put too much stress on our financial reserve, so it'd be something that maybe we should discuss with, uh, our, our staff.
Um, we could have it be that we come up with a number tonight and then ask for a, a, bring it back again for a second, second discussion, could we not, for beyond?
Absolutely. If the council wanted to come up with a number tonight, say the four fifty that we discussed, then we could bring this back for further discussion as to what, what kind of, um, uh, additional funding you'd look at and what kind of conditions you'd want to place on that, and then I would be happy to contact Mr. Murphy, and we can kind of sit down and.
I'd, I'd like to do that, because I, 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 I'm not even sure, but I'm sorry for cutting you off if I did, Scott, uh, Mr. Wolf. I, I, the, the one hesitancy I have there is, you know, the idea here is to snowball this. The idea here is to get this ball rolling. I don't want it to be, well, solving, they, they, you know, did four fifty, so like, we'll also do four fifty, but only if it's like, no, no, let's, let's say we're going to do this, and let's contribute some money and get the ball rolling. And say, look, Beelton did a million, or whatever it would be. And, and so then solving, the pressure would be on solving, and say, okay, well, maybe they're not, you know, committed to that or whatever, you know, it's a lot of money. There's two and a half years of budget for it. We'd like, I think everybody can agree, this is a good community project. Um, so I'd like to, I'd like to consider that.
I, I was also just going to add, if we didn't want to make it contingent on another entity, I mean, we could, we could put it back on the Aquatic Center and say something like, okay, you know, when you hit five million, we'll give you another X amount of dollars. When you hit six million, we'll give you an X, like, so we're kind of incentivizing their fundraising. And then we're also, like, we're rewarding their fundraising and also saying, like, and it also incentivizes fundraisers. It's like, well, if we get to, if the Aquatics Foundation gets to six million, you know, Beelton puts in another five hundred thousand, so that gives them the leverage to be like, don't you want to give? Don't you want to give us to the point where Beelton can also give us? So we can also, like, that's not, that's just another suggestion. If we didn't want to leverage it with another city, we can just, to your point, we can just be like, we'll put the goal on the fundraising and just, like, every time you hit a, a point, every time you break a thermometer, you get something from Beelton, and that's a number that we can come up with later, but that's just another suggestion.
No, I appreciate that, but I don't think there would need to be a cap.
Yeah, and that's fine, too. I'm just, I'm just saying, like, if we didn't want to make it contingency on another entity, that's all. We just.
Maybe I should, maybe I would suggest that, um, we deal with the, the current number tonight, whatever that number's going to be. And then I sit down perhaps with, uh, Mr. Murphy, maybe representative from the tribe down the road or the Aquatics Foundation, and kind of work out um, a program moving forward that might work for everyone. I, I, I don't want to put any, I don't want to put city, either city in a bad position, but it's something that we can work collaboratively on, and see if we can come up with a scheme that, that would incentivize further donations to the community down the road.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, so we are agendizing for further discussion for additional funding, so we're really, we're really going for it tonight. Um, we still have the request of four fifty, Mr., or Councilmember Sanchez had suggested the interest of five fifty this evening. Um, there's so many numbers going around. Um, I personally still would stand on the thing of, whatever we do about four fifty, I want Solvings in on it. So I wanted to say that I'm going to be contingent that whatever the number is tonight, I would like it to be, and that would be a good thing to get a commitment before the end of the year, because fundraising is difficult, or is most prominent at the end of the year. So I would just say that where I'm coming from, the number we decide tonight, if it's above four fifty, so I want to say we should at least get Solvings in on that, so that we can double our impact.
I, I, I would just give caveat that as we move closer to the end of the year here, the opportunities to place items on city council agendas for funding approval like that are, are, are pretty slim.
Which is why we wanted to.
A little tight.
Why we're doing it tonight, so.
I'm referring to Solvings.
Oh, well, I mean, tough. Uh, he's coming back up already. Oh, my gosh. It's like a residency in Vegas.
I was going to say, obviously, I cannot commit on behalf of the council, but I do, I can commit that I will bring it to them.
Okay.
Uh, and have that conversation.
I would make him, I'm.
I'll defer to, 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 you know, your wisdom in fundraising, Mayor Silva.
I'm a fan. I mean, it is an, an easy number for me, is just to go from four fifty to five hundred, and then it gets a million dollars funded between the cities. That's the way, as you said, it was to get us to the million dollars. So my motion would be for four hundred and fifty thousand dollars with a fifty, for approved with a fifty thousand dollar increase, should the city of Solvings be willing to match us at that, so that the two cities fund a million dollars between the two cities, and that would be my motion. Not that there's a timeframe on it, understanding the limitations, but that fifty thousand dollars would be increased once Solvings makes a commitment to move their donation up to fifty thousand dollars, or five hundred thousand dollars. That'd be my motion. And with the provision from Ms. Mead about adding, Beelton is explicitly written as part of the programming.
And, and just, it's in the staff report, but also adopting Solvings' other conditions.
And with all the other solving's conditions at all, et cetera, et cetera.
Are we also giving guidance to staff to come back after?
And include guidance for staff to return within the next few months for a discussion of how we could further explore funding opportunities and, and further the support for Beelton to the pool project. Did I capture everything in that little tiny motion with so many words?
Seconded.
Wait.
Surprisingly, I think I understood it all. I think we're, I think we're good.
Okay, and we have a second from Mr. Horn, or Councilmember Hornick.
Okay, Mayor Silva.
Hi.
Councilmember Hornick.
Hi.
Councilmember Sanchez.
Hi.
And Councilmember Mead.
Hi.
Thank you very much for all of you being here tonight. All right. Spent a lot of money tonight, everybody. Yeah, so, um, you'll need to, we'll get a moment for the, oh, you're here, okay.
Give you applause.
Let's give a quick, I need, let's give a quick five-minute recess, yeah, five-minute recess here, we'll resume in five minutes.
Lean into our skill set.
Everyone going to bring it back now? All right, we'll resume the meeting at eight o'clock tonight, eight oh one. Um, we are now moving on to item number eleven, resolution number twenty-five dash twenty-nine. A resolution of the City Council of the City of Beelton, California, approving the Fifth Amendment to the City Manager Employment Agreement and updating the salary schedule. And our staff contacted tonight the city attorney, Greg Murphy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, on June twelfth, the city council met in closed session and, uh, completed its annual performance review for the city manager. Uh, it was a very positive performance review, and in light of that, the city manager has presented some requested amendments to his, uh, current contract. Um, that would include a five percent cost of living adjustment that matches what was given to staff for the year, as well as a three percent merit increase. Um, in addition, uh, the term of his contract dealing with salary will now state that, uh, in any year in which the city council approves a cost of living increase equal to the Consumer Price Index, uh, he will get that automatically, but if the city council approves a greater number, uh, uh, he will get that automatically, but if the city council approves a greater number, uh, his increase will come back to the council. That's because uh, the law specifically requires that. Uh, the city manager's increase cannot be greater than the CPI unless the council specifically acts. You can thank our friends uh, in the city of Bell uh, fifteen years ago or so for that provision. But that's why that's there and that's why his request, um, as our firm wrote it out, gives uh, him the most leeway possible to, to see or to realize the same increase that the rest of staff gets. Uh, in addition, he asked for an increase to his medical expense reimbursement plan, which is a uh, an amount of money that he can draw from um, once he shows actual expenses and an increase to his automobile allowance, uh, neither of which have, have increased um, in a number of years. Those two increases are a benefit to the city because they do benefit your city manager, but they're also not subject to PERS requirements in the future. So the total increase would be six hundred dollars a month that the city would not um, be on the hook for um, downstream. But as, as I say, a six hundred dollar benefit per month to the city manager is a nice benefit to him. Uh, and it's kind of a win-win. Uh, if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them. But this um, uh, proposal, um, which we heartily endorse is one that was not negotiated, rather some discussions were had over some terms and legality and how to frame them. And this was what the city manager came up with on his own, so it's not like we've tried to knock him down at all. Uh, we just present it to you for your review and approval this evening.
Thank you very much. Um, are there any questions for staff at this time?
No questions.
No questions. Okay. Um, do we, we have no public's comments. Do we have anyone online for public comment? Okay, we'll bring it back then to council for discussion and a possible motion.
I don't have anything to discuss.
Okay.
Part of the discussion goes, I want um, as a point of reference, we don't have anybody here anymore. The, oh, the public is not here. And, and I just appreciate that. That is a testament to his hard work. The people are happy in this town. They don't come. They're, we're not faced with a, a lot of people. And I appreciate your, all your hard work.
I move to approve resolution number twenty five, twenty nine, a resolution of the city council of the city of Beelton, California approving the fifth amendment to the city manager employment agreement and updating the salary schedule as presented.
And I'll second.
Okay, Vice Mayor Lewis.
Hi.
Mayor Silva.
Hi.
Councilmember Hornick.
Hi.
Councilmember Mead.
Hi.
And Councilmember Sanchez.
Hi.
Wonderful.
Thank you all very much.
Great.
Thank you for your hard work. Terribly, terribly happy to work with you.
Great, well, thank goodness. We now move to your report.
Your report, that one, okay.
I hope it's five percent better. Yeah.
Uh, it's actually, it's better because I've been able to drop one of the items off it. Uh, seeing as how the ad hoc committee discussion took place earlier, I won't bring that up again. Um, just a couple of items beyond the ad hoc committee though. Both rather fun. Uh, the first off is that we have an entry in the scarecrow contest and I would like to invite everyone here, everyone in the public, uh, to vote for the city's entry in the scarecrow contest. That uh, vote can take place at SYVscarecrows.com, SYVscarecrowsplural.com. Uh, we are number twenty four, city of Beelton, uh, happy and pee-wee splitting peas. The idea coming from our newest council member, Councilmember Mead.
And executed amazingly well by Kat Derry, our deputy city clerk and our Parks Department.
Cruise director.
Cruise director, cruise director, yeah. And um, and, and the, the parks guys, the guys, the capital T, capital V, the guys. Yes, yeah. So thanks, Kat, for taking my idea and making it happen because it looks adorable.
And secondly, I would like to just remind everyone that November, which is coming up rather soon here, uh, is also the month during which we have our fall festival. Uh, fall fest will take place November seventh through the ninth on Avenue of Flags. I think it'll just be bigger and better than last year. So everyone's invited out. I'm going to end right there because we're already later than I thought we'd be.
All right. And now we'll move into closed session and I will have our city attorney read us into that.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's one item, uh, potential initiation of litigation, which is allowed to be in closed session per government code section five four nine, five six point nine D four. Thank you.
Will we be coming back into?
Uh, we will, I believe not. I will report to the city clerk if any reportable action was taken and what time adjournment.
Thank you very much. All right, we will move it to closed session at.